We just want to welcome y'all to our Bible study. We're going over the Satan and the demons. And we asked our participants if the name Satan is a name, or the name devil's a name. But actually, these terms, they're not names, they're titles. You see, the Satan is an English transliteration of a Greek transliteration of a Hebrew word. So it's a translation of a translation. And it comes from the word ha-satan, ha meaning thee, and satan meaning Satan. So ha-satan, this word literally means an adversary, or one who stands against. That's what the literal word ha-satan means. It could refer to humans who oppose one another, such as in First Kings. It can refer to the angel of the Lord in Numbers 22. And it can refer to a spiritual being in God's throne room. Think about the story of Job, when the ha-satan, the adversary, comes to God in his throne room. So Satan is not a name, but it's a title describing a person's function in a story. And they are the one opposed, who stand against another person or another thing. The devil is an English translation of a Greek word, diabolos. So it describes a person who slanders, or who speaks to defame another person. And this Greek word is used to refer to humans who talk maliciously, such as in First Timothy. It refers to gossip, which is in Second Timothy, or slander the reputation of another. So we can see this in Titus. It also is used to refer to the function of a spiritual being in God's heavenly throne room, namely, the one who accuses God's people and slanders their reputation. So the old Greek translation of the Book of Job, the Greek word diabolos, was used to translate the Hebrew word ha-satan, the adversary. Now, these two titles, devil and Satan, were interchangeable in Jewish literature by the time of Jesus. So what that means is they would use these words interchangeably. Devil, Satan, they meant the same thing to them. So we can see this in some of the Gospels. Then Jesus was led by the Spirit into the wilderness to be tested by the devil. We see it in Mark. At once, the Spirit sent him, Jesus, into the wilderness, and he was in the wilderness forty days, being tested by the Satan. Look at Luke. Jesus, full of the Holy Spirit, left the Jordan and was led by the Spirit into the wilderness, where for forty days he was tested by the devil. So throughout Jesus's mission, we're moving on to our next point. Throughout Jesus's mission of announcing the arrival of God's kingdom, you know, his father's kingdom, he made it clear that his adversary was not a human, but rather the spiritual powers of evil who are presented by the one particular being referred to by many titles. And there's many titles. We have the devil or the Satan, which is mentioned in Matthew and Mark. We have the ruler of demons, mentioned in Luke. We have Beelzebub, which means lord of the house, which is in Matthew. And we also have the power of darkness, which is in Luke. Now, it's clear that Jesus assumes a whole storyline about the powers of spiritual evil that he never taught any depth, including the origins and purpose of evil spiritual beings, why they have the power they do, and what kind of threat they pose. All this and more is assumed knowledge of the Old Testament. Aside from the occasional side comments, for example, in Matthew 25, Jesus and the apostles presume that those who are hearing the Scripture, like us, have a shared understanding about spiritual beings, that we already know the background of these beings. So the storyline about spiritual evil that Jesus and apostles assume that you have in your head is provided in the Hebrew Scriptures, the Old Testament. To understand how Jesus conceived of his mission and why he went to Jerusalem to die on behalf of his people, all this assumes the robust story of God's mission to overcome the powers of darkness in his good world. So let's focus on the main themes about spiritual evil that we find in the Old Testament, in the first three quarters of your Bible. So spiritual evil in the Hebrew Scriptures. The portrayal of spiritual evil in the Hebrew Scriptures, the Old Testament, is fascinating and it's complex. The biblical authors never express the mysterious nature of evil by describing it directly. Rather, they give readers a mosaic of stories and images showing how evil manifests itself in and through human behavior. Like evil itself, the powers of spiritual evil are elusive and they're hard to nail down, yet their presence is always felt in the biblical drama, as it is in our day-to-day lives, if we have the eyes to see it. As with most important biblical themes, Genesis 1 through 11 offers us crucial starting points for our reflections on spiritual evil in the biblical story. So let's look at the most famous one. We got the snake in the Garden of Eden, which Genesis, chapters 1 through 3. So, "And God said, Let the land bring forth living creatures after their kind, cattle and creeping things, and beasts of the land after their own kind; and it was so. God made the beasts of the land after their kind, and the cattle after their kind, and everything that creeps on the ground after its kind; and God said that it was good. And God said, Let us make human in our image, according to our likeness, and let them rule over the fish of the sea, and over the birds of the sky, and over the cattle, and over all the earth, and over every creeping thing that creeps on the earth." And this is from Genesis 1, verses 24 through 26. So on day six of Genesis 1, God populates the dry land with creatures. First the animals, then after that, humanity. But notice that the animals are called living creatures. And then they're specified by rough categories. They're put into categories. Domesticated animals, creepers, the wild ones that run and hide, and the wild beast. Notice also that humans are the last to be created in Genesis 1. Yet they are the ones who are elevated to rule over all creation, the sea and the sky, and over the land creatures. That's what they're appointed to rule over. This establishes a major design pattern in a biblical story. God elevates the latecomer to a role of honor over the earlier comers. In other words, God appoints the humans who come last over the creatures who were created first. Now, in the Book of Genesis, this theme of the latecomer being elevated often focuses on the jealousy and the anger of the earlier comers, those who arrive first. Think about Cain and Abel, or Jacob and Esau, remember? The older, it was prophesied, the older would serve the younger. Or think about Joseph's older brothers, who hated him because of his dreams of ruling over them. Or think later in the Bible of David's jealous brothers, who were not chosen to be king in First Samuel. So you can see this theme over and over, how those who arrived later end up ruling over the earlier ones, or the younger ruling over the older. So when we readers, when we come to Genesis, chapter 3, after we consider this pattern of the latecomers ruling over the earlier comers, you're prompted to notice that the beast of day six, who are created first, and yet summoned to come under the rule of humans who came second. Will any of them be like Cain or Esau, or Joseph's brothers, and resent being ruled by a creature who come to the dry land after them? Well, we'll see. So we also have to recall, the Garden of Eden is a high mountain garden temple, where heaven and its creatures overlap with the earth and its creatures. And we talked about this in previous Bible studies. The Garden of Eden is the source, the garden in Eden, excuse me, is the source of a single river that leaves the garden and divides into four rivers that water the main regions of the biblical world. And we read this in Genesis 2. This has an implication. The Garden of Eden is portrayed as the highest place on the dry land. It's on a mountain. So Eden is described as the hostland of the ultimate temple garden. It's a land of gold. It has fruit, has precious gems, it has abundance. It's described as the ultimate place. So these are precisely the images and the materials used in the construction of the tabernacle in Exodus 25 through 31, and in the Temple of Jerusalem. When they built the tabernacle, when they built the temple in Jerusalem, they were all paying homage to the Garden of Eden where God dwells. You know, so it's all paying homage to that theme. So the heaven, the earth, Eden temple, you know, just follow me, is the same place Israel's prophet Saul in their visions. Okay? A place where God's heavenly presence overlaps with earth. And what's in the middle? The Garden of Eden, right? The overlap. So we're told that there are cherubim in the garden, right? Who, what are cherubim? They're guardians of God's space. And there's, just as there's cherubim in the garden, just as they populate God's throne room. So all this, we're thinking about all this, all this leads the readers, us, to expect that Adam and Eve lived together in the garden with spiritual beings of the hybrid animal variety. So when a talking snake appears in Genesis 3, we have a category of this type of creature. So this identity of the talking snake in Genesis 3 is developed as you continue to read the Old Testament. So the snake of Genesis 3 is introduced with a dense, very important statement from Genesis 3:1. It says, "Now the snake," in the Hebrew it's called nakash, "was more shrewd than any beast of the field which the Lord God had made; and he said to the woman, Indeed, God has said, You shall not eat from any tree of the garden." He asked a question to them. So this comment invites for us to consider that there's more to this snake than it just being an animal. For starters, it's a talking snake, right? Snakes don't talk when we go outside, you know, with the, they don't. I mean, if they do, okay, we might need to talk, but anyway, snakes don't talk. They don't, anyway. So this phrase, the snake being more shrewd than any beast of the field, it could mean two things. Number one, it could mean that the snake belongs to the beast of the field, and it's just more clever than the rest. Or it could mean that it's technically not a beast of the field. Rather, it's a different type of creature that's simply more shrewd than any other kind of beast. On either interpretation, you still have the, you still have the obviousness, which is, this snake is not your average Joe snake. So this snake also appears to have knowledge of God's decisions and his purposes. What does the snake say? "God knows, and the day that you eat the fruit, you will be like divine beings. You will be like Elohim. You will know good and bad." And also notice that when God curses the snake in Genesis 3:14, he says something that's kind of puzzling, that's been puzzling for readers across time. He says, "Because you have done this, cursed are you more than all cattle, and more than every beast of the field; on your belly you will go, and dust you will eat, all the days of your life." So if this was a normal snake, wouldn't it already be crawling on its belly? And then why does God say the snake's future state will be that it'll go in the dust if it already crawls around on the ground itself? So the statement assumes that the snake that approached the humans wasn't on the ground. So this puzzling image of a snake that doesn't crawl on the ground finds its confirmation much later in the biblical story. And the prophet Isaiah has a vision of God's heavenly throne room. He sees heavenly creatures surrounding God's throne. We talked about this a couple sessions ago. In Ezekiel's visions of the same space seeing God's throne, these beings are called cherubim and living creatures. But in Isaiah's prophecy, when he, it's not his prophecy, in his vision, he sees beings called seraphim. Now, listen to, listen to, it's from Isaiah 6. "In the year of King Uzziah's death, I saw the Lord sitting on a throne. Loftian exalted with a train of his robe filling the temple. Seraphim stood above him, each having six wings; with two he covered his face, with two he covered his feet, and with two he flew. And one called out to another and said, Holy, 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 he's the Lord of hosts; the whole earth is full of his glory." Now, this is the only place in the entire Bible where the heavenly throne room creatures are called in Hebrew seraphim. All modern English translations leave this word untranslated, untranslated, which is strange, because it is a normal word. This word seraphim is a normal word for venomous snake. So seraph, Hebrew seraph, that's the singular venomous snake. Seraphim means venomous snakes. It's the plural, right? So we see this in Scripture. Look at Numbers 21. Yahweh sent snakes, nakash, and venomous snakes, seraphim, among the people, and they bit the people. We're looking at Deuteronomy 8. Yahweh led you in a great and terrifying wilderness of the snake, the venomous snake, seraph. So later in the Book of Isaiah, the prophet describes the ruler of Babylon as a snake, nakash, right, it's just the normal word for snake, and a flying snake as seraph. So this appears in the same section as Isaiah's accusation against the ruler of Babylon, which we'll look at in just a moment, which refers both to the human king of Babylon and the spiritual power that lurks behind Babylon. So it's first at two different meanings. So hear it from Isaiah 14. "Do not rejoice, O Philist- Philist- let me try this again. Philistylia, all of you, because the rod that struck you is broken; for from the snake, nakash, root of viper will come out, and its fruit will be a flying snake, seraph." So flying snakes back in the day were common religious icons. You would see them in common cultures back then, in the ancient Near East, and all the societies around Israel. And these images have even been found in Israelite art. So you can see, you can see several different, you can see several different flying snakes here. You see them? Here's one, here's another one. And see, notice how they have wings? And here's another one. This one has wings as well. So that's, that's one point we need to consider, okay, this seraph. We also have to look at Ezekiel. And Ezekiel, when he looks out to Tyre, which is a city, it's a powerful seaside kingdom of the day. He accuses its leader of acting like an ancient spiritual rebel. So Israel, excuse me, Ezekiel first accuses Tyre's king of claiming to be a deity, of claiming to be a god. So he's, I keep wanting to call Ezekiel Israel. It's Ezekiel. Ezekiel then likens the king of Tyre to an ancient spiritual rebel who inhabited Eden. And he describes this in Ezekiel 28. "Son of man, take up a lament concerning the king of Tyre, and say to him, This is what the sovereign Lord says: You were the seal of perfection, full of wisdom and perfect and beauty. You were in Eden, the garden of God; every precious stone adorned you. Carnelian, chrysolite, and emerald, topaz, onyx, and jasper, lapis-lusy, turquoise, and barrel; your settings and mountings were made of gold; on the day you were created, they were prepared. You were anointed as a covering cherub, for so I ordained you. You were on the holy mount of God. You walked among the fiery stones. You were blameless in your ways, from the day you were created till the witness was found in you. Through your widespread trade, you were filled with violence, and you sinned. So I drove you in disgrace from the mount of God, and I expelled you guardian cherub among the fiery stones. Your heart became proud on account of your beauty, and you were corrupt, and you corrupted your wisdom because of your splendor." So Isaiah and Ezekiel are providing us, the readers, with the earliest interpretation of Genesis 3, the snake within the Bible itself. These authors understood the snake to be a spiritual being, one of the winged throne guardians, a living creature, also known as a cherubim, in the garden temple. But as we learned, remember that pattern? The last will be first, you know, the younger will rule the older. From what we learned of this design pattern in Genesis, it seems that we're meant to infer that this snake, that this spiritual being, that this cherubim or seraphim resented coming under authority of the human creatures who were, whose origins were in the dirt. So this snake was jealous that it was being ruled over by us. And so this glorious creature who's described, we've seen in Ezekiel, what we just read, it misuses its honored place of God-given authority, and it rebels by seducing humans into misusing their authority in the same way. So in this way, the snake represents a spiritual rebellion that coincides with the earthly rebellion of the humans. So Genesis 3 portrays the fall of humanity, not only the fall of humans, but also the fall of this spiritual rebel, of this snake. After the Garden of Eden, this spiritual rebel is almost never directly described. Rather, his presence is hinted when biblical characters face a moment of decision or a great moral test. Now Cain, remember Cain and Abel. Cain is tempted to murder his brother by sin. And sin is described as a hungry animal in Genesis 4:7. So God asks Cain, isn't it the case that you, that if you do good, you will be accepted? God's asking Cain, look, if you just work hard, honor my request, everything will be fine, right? But if you do not do good, Cain, at the door is sin lurking, and its desire is for you. Now, this story, this story is important because it sets a paradigm. It sets a model for how the snake operates outside the Garden of Eden. Remember, we talked about how this creature was cursed by God. It was also cast out of the Garden of Eden alongside humanity. So this evil becomes prominent, and it becomes present in moments of sinful desire that test a human's moral character. And it plays the same animal-like role as the snake in the garden. It twists words, and it tells deceptive lies, and half-truths, half-truths, half-truce that justify inappropriate behavior. When humans give in to these lies, they embrace their own self-destruction. So Genesis 3 and 4 set the template for how spiritual evil works in and through human decisions. Evil is not something God created. This is not yin and yang. You don't have good and evil. They, they didn't exist alongside of each other. Rather, evil is the sad corruption of what is intended for good. It's the pervasion of good. It's the lack of good. It's the corruption of good. And although evil is always a possibility in a world where God grants true dignity and moral responsibility to his creation, another word, free will, evil becomes a possibility because he gives free will to everyone. It is God's creatures that choose to give in to evil, resulting in self-ruin. In many Christian traditions, Genesis 3 is the primary fall narrative. Humanity ate from the tree of knowledge, and we were cast out of God's presence in the Garden of Eden, right? We were cast out. However, Genesis 3 doesn't stand in isolation. This story is woven into a tight narrative pattern that unites all of Genesis 1 through 11, which offers multiple falls, fall stories. It wasn't just Genesis 3 where humanity fell. There were other beings who also fell. And the spiritual rebellion that began in Genesis 3, remember the, the snake being cast out, is intensified in Genesis 4 in the story of Cain, and then again in Genesis 6. So in Genesis 6, we about, we hear about the sons of Elohim. And Genesis 6 presents modern readers with one of the strangest stories in the Bible. Now here, Genesis 6, verses 1 through 4. "Now when humanity began to multiply on the face of the land, and daughters were born to them, the sons of God saw that the daughters of humanity were good; and they took wives for themselves, whomever they chose. Then Yahweh said, My spirit shall not reside with humanity forever, because that one is also flesh; so his days shall be, shall be one hundred and twenty years. The Nephilim were in the land in those days, and also afterward, when the sons of God came into the daughters of men, and they bore children to them; those were the mighty men, who are of old, men of renown." Now, while modern readers such as us struggle to understand with what's happening here, excuse me, while modern readers struggle to understand what's happening here, the biblical authors were drawing upon a shared understanding that provides the background of this story. Because most modern readers such as us don't share this ancient context. We don't have this background, which we've investigated in this story. It's harder for us to track. So looking at Genesis 6, we have the question, who are the sons of Elohim? Now, the sons of Elohim is the standard Hebrew phrase for spiritual beings who surround Yahweh's heavenly throne room in the Eden man, Eden mountain temple. Okay, so the divine council, the sons of God, the sons of Elohim, these are spiritual beings, God's spiritual staff team, who are serving him. Now, this same phrase, the sons of Elohim, is also used elsewhere for the same beings who are described in Job, chapter 1, and chapter 2. And these are the same hosts of heaven described in First Kings with Micah. So these are members of the divine council, whom God invites to participate in his heavenly room. These are the same spiritual beings. So just as angels can take appearance, take human appearance, and interact with humans, so too, it seems, that the divine council can also do the same thing. This story, Genesis 6, represents a second heavenly rebellion alongside the snake seraphim's rebellion in Genesis 6, excuse me, Genesis 3. So we had the fall of humanity in Genesis 3. We had the fall of the snake in Genesis 3. And now we're having a second heavenly rebellion described in Genesis 6, with the sons of Elohim coming down and having sex with human women. So then here's the next question. Did these sons of Elohim actually have sex with human women? Well, yes, from this story, it seems that they did. These spiritual beings crossed the heaven and earth boundary, right? You know, we have, there's a boundary. They went from heaven, they came to earth, and they had sex with women. So the fact that this is presented as another fall narrative is clear from the narrative design pattern used by the author, who presents this story on analogy with Genesis 3. In other words, it's kind of running parallel. it's kind of running parallel. Remember, you had the fall of humanity, you had the fall of the snake creature, and then we also have a second fall with these other spiritual beings who misuse their authority by having sex with human women. So look at this right here. This might help, this visual. So Genesis two through three, we have the snake and the women. Therefore, a man will leave his father and his mother and cling to his wife, and they will become one flesh. Right? When a man loves a woman, you know, they come together, they marry, and they have children together, right? But then look at, look how it's compared to Genesis six. "And it came about when humanity began to multiply on the face of the land, the sons of God saw the daughters of humanity, that they were good, that they were attractive, and they took for themselves wise from all which they chose." They misused their authority. Look at Genesis three six. "And the woman saw that the tree was good for eating, and that it was enticing to the eyes, and it was desirable for gaining wisdom, and she took its fruit, and she ate it, and she gave it to her husband with her, and he ate as well." And look at Genesis six three, "And Yahweh said, My spirit will not dwell with humanity forever, in so much as he is also flesh, and his days will be one hundred and twenty years." The top left quadrant and the bottom right quadrant are similar with what? The flesh. See? And then, the top right quadrant and the bottom left quadrant, we see how the women, how Eve sees how the fruit is good, and we also see these sons of Elohim seeing how the women are good. So in other words, the author of Genesis is making comparisons to how these two falls are related to one another with wordplay. The act of the sons of God is portrayed as an inverted replay of the garden story. Adam and Eve ate the fruit, but it's intensified as well. Instead of the woman taking what is good in her own eyes because of the lies of a spiritual being, in Genesis six, it is the spiritual beings who take women that are good in their eyes. So this analogy, which is intended by the author of Genesis, also prompts us modern readers to consider the motive of the sons of God in light of the woman's motive. The woman, Eve, desired to have wisdom and life in the garden on her own terms instead of honoring the creator's command. This illuminates the unstated motive of the sons of God. The sons of God in Genesis six took these women as a move to restore the life of Eden to humanity against God's command, since they had been exiled from access to the tree of life. So in other words, the sons of Elohim were trying to get humanity back into the Garden of Eden in a different manner that was against God's wishes. So in Genesis nineteen, we find a narrative designed to invert this story as well about spiritual beings having sex with women. In the story of Lot, Lot is hosting the two angels in Sodom. And then the men of Sodom come to Lot's house in order to have sex with the men, the angels. And Lot, in a horrifying act of betrayal, offers his two daughters to the crowd of men instead of the angels. So the angels intervene, remember in Genesis nineteen, the angels intervene, and they strike all the men who want to have sex with them with blindness. And this pattern, excuse me, this story is patterned after Genesis six, one through two. It shows how corrupt humanity has become, once again, presenting Lot as the opposite of Abraham and Noah. Just wanna thank everyone for joining us for our session on the Satan and the demons, and we will see y'all later. Goodbye.